I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Alfano?
Thank you, Mr. Romigino. I'd like to read a quick statement if I may. In New Jersey, open public means laws enacted to ensure the rights of the public will have advanced notice of and to attend a meeting of public bodies on which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, of course, I call for the Fed has caused notice that this meeting is being published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the offices of the clerk, library, rectifier, the offices of the Fed, and the offices of school numbers three, four, five, six, and the high school on the sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and notice reported to report on the record, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. This is an official meeting. I would like to take the attendance if I may. Mrs. Abreu?
Here.
Mr. Capan? Here. Mrs. Freyda?
Here.
Mr. Garcia? Mr. Nedru?
Here.
Dr. Pontelliano?
Here.
Mr. Russo? Mr. Shelley?
Here.
Mr. Bakia?
Here.
Sorry, no problem.
Mr. Yunus? Here. Mr. Romigino?
Thank you, Mr. Alfano. Just a couple of quick items before I look at the consent agenda. I do want to make mention that, to the board, that October fourth, we had a staff in service. We had all of our pre-K through twelve teachers and administrators involved in varying activities. And I just want to thank our administrators and our teachers and supervisors for helping out that day. October seventeenth, we celebrated Spirit Week across the district. I also want to make mention that in November, at our November seventeenth meeting, which, by the way, is going to be a Thursday night, November seventeenth, we are going to invite all of our students who had a perfect score on last year's New Jersey Learning Assessment, which is a great achievement. I believe there are somewhere between ten and twelve, I don't have the number in front of me, between ten and twelve students from elementary all the way through high school who had a perfect score either in ELA in math, and I believe there may have been one student who had it in both. So we will honor those students and their parents at our November seventeenth meeting. I also want to quickly mention and congratulate our fall sport coaches and athletes for their participation this season, and just make mention that this week is a very busy week. I know we had girls soccer today at two o'clock at Somerville. We have boys soccer versus Nutley on the twenty-seventh at two o'clock. We have a football home game versus Teaneck. Is that another twenty-sixth?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, twenty-seventh. Football on this sheet is the twenty-seventh at seven o'clock, am I right? Yes, okay. And volleyball at Wayne Valley, ten a.m. on the twenty-ninth. And cross-country, they're competing at Garrett Mountain, Garick Mountain, the twenty-ninth at eleven-thirty. This is posted to our website, so I did want to just take time to congratulate and the board, on behalf of the board, all of our coaches and student athletes who took part in our fall season. When I, I want to look at the consent agenda at this time. Just want to mention that, as I do each month, we have a number of staff members who are attending professional development opportunities, both virtually and outside of the district. So we are approving compensation for travel and registration fees. On page three of the agenda, we are approving some staff members who are going to work in our early risers program. This is a program that's funded by our ESAR and ARP money, which is federal funds. And this is to address learning loss that students may have experienced during the two years of COVID. So we are offering early riser program in schools three, four, five, and six in the middle school. And we're just appointing those staff members who will be working in that program. Page four of the agenda, we have a number of, give me a second, lunch aids who we are appointing to work in our lunch program in various schools throughout the district. Jumping over to page five, we are approving or revising contract for Rosa Miranda, who's currently a teacher at school number five. She was going to end her employment with us in December, but Rosa is going to be taking over for maternity leave that's coming about at school five, so Rosa will be with us for the remainder of the school year. A little further down, we are approving a maternity leave for Brenda Moon, teacher at school number five, beginning January twenty-third, and Brenda, again, will be returning this September two thousand twenty-three. We wish her luck. I do want to point out the retirement of Yosilda Suarez, high school science teacher. I met with her the other day, and I know Mr. Pinto has had conversations with her. She'll be retiring effective January thirty-first. So just a note to the board, we have posted that position, and we are actively looking for her replacement. Okay, page six, just one transfer I want to point out, which is within school three, just transferring Scott Moran, special ed teacher, from the resource room to the LLD class until January, when we have a new staff member taking over that position. Scotty will remain in school three in the resource room at that time. Page seven, we are approving the school nursing plan for this year, for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which is a formality and is mandated by the Department of Education. I'm pointing out that we had a bullying incident that was investigated, and we are confirming the outcome of that case. And as you know, as per state guidelines, we can't divulge any specific information about any bullying incidents. November fifteenth, we're approving a staff in service for grades pre-K through eight. The high school will have a regular day on the fifteenth, and the rest of the district will be involved in teacher meetings once students are let out at around twelve forty-five. We're also approving a half-day November twenty-third, as we do each year. That's the day before the Thanksgiving recess. We're also approving tonight, recommended by the superintendent of schools, to accept the following scores for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This is what part of our presentation will be tonight. We discuss dynamic learning maps and New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. We're officially approving that. We're also approving on page eight, under policies, resolution recommended by the superintendent to approve an open lunch for the qualifying high school seniors per the attached authorization waiver effective November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, and, I'm sorry, for the beginning of November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. So we are going to engage or try a trial program for the second marking period for high school seniors who qualify. And some of those details are outlined, and I know Mr. Pinto will be talking more about that to his students at the high school, or he already have?
No, I have not. I'm waiting for the board to make a policy.
Okay, so we just did. And Mr. Pinto, Mr. Pinto will point out the specifics of that beginning program in terms of who qualifies and what you need to qualify. So again, it's a trial program. It's something that the board and I have talked about with Mr. Pinto and the vice principals at the high school for a while. Of course, safety is our main concern above everything, so we think we've built that into the guidelines. And we also, there are some qualifications or procedures that students have to follow, and Mr. Pinto will review that with everyone at a given time. Other policies or procedures are just formalities, fire drills, and so on and so forth. We're also revising the MOA agreement that we do each year between the Board of Ed and the local Cliffside Park and Fairview Police Departments. A copy of that is on file in my office. Buildings and grounds, and Mr. Pinto, anything on finance?
Me?
Yes. I'm sorry, Mr. Alfano.
Don't talk about finance. I do not want to talk about finance. That's you.
Thank you, Mr. Romigino. Couple of quick items. We've pretty much gone through our twenty-one, twenty-two audit. We have some area of minor funding which goes to this. We have understood our surplus, which piggybacks on being, we just had with our board finance committee and our facilities committee in regard for the potential capital projects we may be engaging in in spring and summer of two thousand twenty-three. The high school office reno moved at six in the high school, basically project at the high school. We've got pretty good traction over the last few weeks. The metal will be in hopefully, the thirty-first, which will block out the high school roof. And we started to engage the twenty-three, twenty-four budget, which starts July first, two thousand twenty-three. I will be engaging the principals most likely in November to give them an idea of some types of projects we may be engaging on and assessing, based on being, we just have a board and finance committee. And we are also engaging the early process of our twenty-two, twenty-three audit, things such as ASSA, which is an enrollment program, DRTRS, which is transportation program, and our ELL and ESL programs. That's pretty much it.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to accept the agenda, any questions from the board on the consent agenda? Any questions from the public on the consent agenda? Motion to accept?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Charrabak?
I'll second.
Now, Mr. Nedru?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Romigino, I'll take the vote. Mrs. Abreu?
Yes.
Mr. Capan?
Yes on the consent agenda and no to the open lunch.
So that was no for the open lunch, Mr. Capan?
Right.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Freyda?
Yes, on the consent agenda and no to the open lunch.
It's not that serious. To confirm, Mrs. Freyda, yes on the agenda, no to the open lunch?
No.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Freyda. Mr. Nedru?
Yes, on all items.
Dr. Pontelliano?
Yes.
Mr. Shelley?
Yes.
Mr. Bakia?
Yes.
And Mr. Yunus?
Yes.
How many do we have, Lou?
So move.
Do we have five on the open lunch? We do, okay. Okay, at this time, what I'd like to do is introduce Mr. Albin. As I mentioned, Mr. Albin is our gifted and talented coordinator for the district, also works with data. Mr. Albin is here tonight. Also, our principals are with us tonight, and Mrs. Calabrese, our director of curriculum. So, Mr. Albin?
I'll be brief. Is it okay if I sit?
Yeah, move it, pull the chair up.
Sorry.
Lou, could you maybe, maybe one set of lights you can close? It might be easier to see. I don't know, you got to just play around with it. That's probably good, the first one. The first one. That's good.
Like the eye check.
Yeah.
Okay, so esteemed board members, I, my name is Angelo Albin. I am a Title I and gifted and talented teacher in Cliffside Park. I also dabble in numbers here and there. In the interest of brevity, this presentation has about seventy slides. Most of them are actually the breakdown of the numbers of our NJSLA administration results. Each one of those slides is my children, so skipping through them is painful to me. But again, in the interest of brevity, I don't want to keep everyone here all night. The presentation is broken down into three sections. There's district analysis, which is an overall analysis of numbers. There is a school analysis, which will have a breakdown of each school's by grade level and subject. And the last one is the narrative section, which I'm going to go ahead and skip ahead to. I do have to mention the participation numbers. The state of New Jersey requires us to have better than ninety percent participation rates in all state assessments, which we actually very easily hit. Participation in English Language Arts was about ninety-four and a half percent. It's a little, it's like four point five. And these are, this is the breakdown compared to the state by grade level. I will talk about the actual results briefly at the end. The mathematics participation rate overall was ninety-four percent, which, once again, it's very, very good. Please notice that some of the numbers are very small here in geometry. We only had six students take the geometry examination because it was only ninth graders that were taking it. There were only six ninth graders. So those numbers will not be reported. I have them if you'd like to see them, but I cannot put them on the presentation because of FERPA concerns. Yes? And finally, the, these are the breakdowns for mathematics percentages in total. And science, science participation is also very, very high. Eleventh grades are a little below ninety percent, but overall, for the district, we have almost ninety-three percent. Okay. And these are the science scores, which we will talk about. It was probably our, overall, our worst, sadly, our worst performance, but it was statewide. It's not just us. Now, you will see, you have seen these before if you've been on the board for quite some time. These are the colored breakdowns of each one. The first section is all, it's by grade level, so you're going to see mathematics, English mathematics, English mathematics, and for fifth grade, you're going to see English mathematics and science as well. Sixth grade, the science assessment was only given to the fifth grade, the eighth grade, and the eleventh grade. So again, in the interest of brevity, I'm going to skip through most of these and go into the school analysis section. Similar charts, you're going to see scores by school. So this is school three, their third and fourth grade are the only grades that took the assessment at that school. English Language Arts percentages. And, and just again, to remind you that level one is not meeting expectations. Level two is, is getting close, partially meeting. The yellow is almost, it's approaching, they're very, very close. Green is meeting expectations, and the light blue is the, is exceeding. Those are the, those are the kids where you, the perfect score kids, they reside in that light blue section. Okay, so we'll skip through these. Again, these are broken down by, the state requires demographic analysis. I will just briefly talk through these numbers. I didn't put the charts, I just put the, excuse me, I didn't put the numbers down, I just put charts. It's a little easier to understand this way. Economically disadvantaged students in ELA performed Economically disadvantaged students in ELA performed very close to the general population, which is actually, which is actually very nice. And actually, in the sixth grade, our economically disadvantaged subgroup performed better than, than the general pop, which was quite admirable. Obviously, the percentages of general population includes economically disadvantaged, so they're, the non-econ are a little higher than what appears here. That's ELA. Mathematics, again, not too far off from the general populace. In, in Algebra II, there was, there's no score reported because the end, the end score, the end value is less than 10. We cannot report scores for less than 10. Science performance for economically disadvantaged subgroup in 11th grade was slightly better than the district, actually. In fifth and eighth grade, unfortunately, it was not. The racial subgroups, our African-American subgroup is not reported at all because in each grade level, we had less than 10. So they don't appear here. If you'd like to see those numbers, we do have them. Same thing with the Asian population in fifth, sixth, eighth, and ninth grades. We didn't have enough Asian students to warrant a report. But you can see that, how the white, Asian, Hispanic, and district overall, and compared to the state, were from, that's ELA, mathematics and science, is the same thing. The racial subgroup, excuse me, I went the wrong way. You're going to see the same thing here, the black subgroup does not appear. ELA IEP subgroups, our IEP students were a little harder hit than other subgroups. It's actually the second most affected subgroup. So you're going to see that their ELA math and science performance lags considerably behind general population. And our hardest hit group is actually our ELL subgroups for reasons that I will discuss briefly. Third grade, in fifth grade, there were, there weren't, this is not that it didn't appear, it's literally zero. There was no, where there's a zero, there was enough to report, but it just, none of them achieved proficiency, sadly. Same thing with science. Now, these are, this is the narrative where I'll spend a brief amount of time. I just wanted to let you know that last year's NJSL administrations were the first in our, in this post-pandemic world. It has been reported in many national publications. By the way, these are all clickable articles. If you'd like to read them in detail on the PDF that will be up on the website, you can. Learning loss has been immense, unprecedented. We've never gone through a situation like this. Nationwide mathematics and reading scores have progressed drastically, erasing nearly two decades of growth in some cases, the devastating aftermath of several years of interrupted learning. We as educators are facing a Sisyphean task in having to bring our students back to previous levels of knowledge, all the while teaching new concepts and ideas. But I feel like the staff at Cliffside Park is up to the task, and these scores are really just the first step in finding out how much intervention and how much effort we're going to have to put in to bring all our students up to, to, to acceptable levels. The narrative for testing, or notable achievements, really, most of our elementary grades actually beat New Jersey state proficiency quite handily. We can only compare ourselves to the state this year because there were no administrations for the last, for 2020 and 21. Therefore, we have no comparative scores. I can't form any, any trend. There's, there's really nothing to show in that respect, so we can only compare to the state. Our ELA numbers in particular are very, very high, especially in sixth and eighth grades. The sixth graders beat the state by nearly 18 percentage points when, which is immense even for a regular year. And the eighth graders also performed admirably with an 11% vesting of the, of the state. Math wasn't too far behind either. Third grade outperformed the state by 7%. Seventh grade by 5% and eighth grade by 11%. So our, our middle school did really, really, really well. Fifth grade is a point of concern. It was the only elementary grade that did not outperform the state. Now, we in discussions have attributed this to the fact that fifth grade was the grade level that was hit the hardest. They didn't have the advantage of taking the test in the third grade, they didn't take it in the fourth, and the difficulty ramps up by grade level. So they, they've never been exposed to, to this sort of test. This grade level is also affected the most, we feel, because of the interruptions in third and fourth grade, which are pivotal years, especially in math, multiplication, division. Those are, those are integral, basic, basic skills that the kids need to have, and they missed out on a lot of that, unfortunately. The results in science across all grade levels have actually been the most eye-opening, and we will discuss that in a separate slide. Any questions on this? Okay. I just wanted to put a, bring, bring you guys up a little bit. I just wanted to show you that we are, the district is putting in a lot of effort, particularly into STEM. The STEM fields, you, what you see here, you can read in detail if you'd like. There's a photo of a makerspace that took place at schools, grades five and six, and we have them at all the schools, Makerspace Day. Rutgers Science Bus came in and had a, there was a field trip for seventh grade students where they did, they learned about STEM professions. Mr. Orin at school six in the middle school, he's, he's starting guitar classes for students, which falls within the STEAM, the STEAM realm. We had a Stevens Institute of Technology come in and have a day of STEM also with our, with our students in the middle school. Girls Code is a really popular program. This one in particular is from school three, which Miss IVEF instituted, and it's, these have all been success stories. It's, it's not all doom and gloom. I just want you to, to, to realize that it's, we're, we're getting there. The plan that we have in place for elementary, administrators have placed a, a lot of emphasis on data analysis this year. That's me. We are trying to, to utilize it to intervene sooner if needed, or to, when possible, push a little bit harder if we see the kids are, are reaching the levels that we want them to. We hope that this approach will help us to accelerate learning, particularly in ELA math and science. We're also in the process of developing in-house data tracking systems that will allow teachers and administrators to, to see all the information in one location so that we can better find patterns and, and ways to help our students. Also, iXL, as you know, has been implemented district-wide as, as a practice and diagnostic tool. It has, it has replaced benchmark assessments. It provides quarterly benchmarks every six weeks. We do benchmark assessments on iXL, and it also allows us constant progress monitoring. Instead of just taking a QBA every marking period, we're doing every six weeks. We're able to see exactly where the kids are, and also specific standards that require more help or, or less. School-wide for ELA has been adopted now from K to eighth grade. School-wide is a digital curriculum that contains more than 100 units of multiple subjects where students can, can utilize a workshop model rather than, rather than single texts. We are encouraging educators to participate in PLCs and professional development opportunities. We have also employed the services of Dr. Tracy Severns, as I'm sure you know, to assist in district-wide strategic planning. The LLI program, Fanta San Penal, LLI program, has been implemented in K, in grades K to six to help accelerate ELA. It's a very intensive ELA program that is designed to bring kids to level in approximately 18 weeks, and it has shown, last year was the first year, it has shown phenomenal, phenomenal results. Conquer Math continues to be a major part of teacher professional development. We have teachers from every grade level attending conferences, year one, year two, and financial literacy as well. We also have adopted a coaching model where ELA and math coaches will go to the classroom when needed for modeling lessons and whatnot. There's also a plan in the works to create a teacher and student panel. The idea is to get a, a better feel of, of student attitudes towards testing. One of the things that I noticed in looking and breaking down scores in detail was the fact that there were some very, very capable students, straight A students, that performed terribly on the test, literally didn't answer questions, zeros across the board. And, and so it, it just tells us that student apathy has something to do with lower scores, and it's something that we'd love to, to dig into. That's one of the things that Dr. Severns is going to help us with, is trying to dig into why, why the attitude towards testing from some of our students. Hopefully, I think it might be partially because of the fact that they know that the test doesn't necessarily affect them, but it, it doesn't give us valuable data if they don't take it seriously. Middle school, school-wide has also been implemented at the middle school, like I said, for sixth, seventh, and eighth. We are hoping that this curriculum facility is cross-curricular work a little, a little more, foster level independent reading in our students, which, which is something that, that will help them throughout their lives. Erica Denman, who's an ELA specialist and focuses on middle school literacy, has been contracted to assist our teachers. I know that she's also helping the elementary, but helping our teachers and supervisors create an effective plan of action for students. One of the aims of the ELA department is to find better ways to prepare students for the research simulation tasks within the NJSLA assessment. Those are the ones that have to do with modeling a scientific task. Every student, every student that takes the NJSLA has to do that task. Some kids do narrative, some kids do literary, but everybody does the research simulation. So it's important to get them all used to the type of questions they want to see. And we're also using Wordly Wise to address vocabulary concerns of our students in mathematics. Math committee has reviewed curriculum, and we have already infused the computer and sciences sign thinking standards into the mathematics curriculum. So this will be a state requirement starting next year for all schools district in New Jersey, but these standards hopefully will help us better integrate math into science and engineering careers. Middle school teachers continue with professional developer conquer math. The SAVAS 2.0 curriculum continues to be used in the middle school as well. And this year, it has actually been updated. They have added some new digital tools and some new assessment, assessment tools for practice. iXL has also become an integral part of practice in middle school. There is a, they also are adding constant new functionality, including a test prep section that is focused just on the standards that are required for NJSLA, which is phenomenal. That's literally in the last couple of weeks is something that they just added. And also, extra help is being offered daily, and students are highly encouraged to attend. Any questions on middle school? Okay. A little bit on high school interventions. We are trying to strengthen writing instruction and student capacity for analysis in informational texts in particular, which at the high school level is probably most of the reading material they have. ELA departments have identified specific standards, such as citing evidence and multiple meaning of words to focus on in writing quizzes and tests. The iXL diagnostic, once again, is being used to identify target and reteach areas of needs and improvement. Also, iXL is now available to the district for science and social studies. So it's, it's covering almost every curriculum that we have. Silent, ah, sorry, greater emphasis has been by the supervisor to ensure PDP goals, such as student engagement in many lessons, are a part of daily instruction so that these practices are actually being followed. Silent reading with intention to address theme, characterization, point of view, author's craft, and build rigor. We want to increase writing in journals and free writing to promote creativity, confidence, and organization. Constant dialogue and implementation of high-quality literature that engages students, something that we want to also focus on. And Mr. Pinto spoke at length about diversity and the diversity inventory at the high school. We want the students to feel like the reading material that they have and the things that they're engaged in are things that matter to them, things that they understand, things that speak to them, and their, their very, very different lifestyles and races, right? In mathematics, we're hoping to increase proficiency rates specifically in Algebra I. We have identified that as a building goal for, for this year and going forward by pinpointing specific standards that they're low on. The NJSLA does provide very detailed breakdowns, which we are looking into much more attentively this year. Again, the iXL diagnostic is being used at the high school extensively. In addition to NJSLA, which applies to elementary, we also have NJGPA practice, there's PSAT practice, there's SAT practice. All that functionality has recently been added, which is, it's great. It's a, it's a one-stop shop for a lot of things. Professional development and conquer math, a lot of teachers at the high school have, have been going, particularly for Algebra I. We also have, we're trying to create a culture of collaboration amongst subject area teachers because these tests are really affecting every subject. We're trying to increase our focus in demonstrating standards. For example, how to properly understand the type of questions that they're asking based on the subclaims. I don't know if you know how the test works, but mathematics questions are organized into subclaim A and B, which is major and supporting content. Reasoning, there's an entire section on reasoning, which is the type of question that says, oh, Suzie did this, is she correct? And you have to justify what you said. And then there's questions that are real-world questions. For Dr. Pantoliano owns a store, she sells knitting needles, and she does this. They're generally multiple choice and multiple parts. So understanding how to answer these questions properly is very important. We are trying to increase our academic language and subject-based vocabulary and providing additional accommodations for Ls, including ELLs, ELL specialists that have identified ELLs as a focus for this year. Any questions on high school? Okay, we're almost there. Almost there. The science, the 2022 NJSLA science assessment scores were much lower than we anticipated. It was actually the one assessment where none of our grade levels outperformed the state of New Jersey, with eighth grade coming the closest, at just two percentage points below. However, this is not really a triumph because proficiency for science in the state of New Jersey is terrible. It's across the state, 80% of students, 80% are below proficiency in science. This might be because we focus on ELA and math so much, maybe. So, but we have made a concerted effort to improve our science education. The elementary and middle schools have adopted a research-based science curriculum developed by Berkeley University called FOS, which you're familiar with it, Full Option Science System. It's designed to teach students using research methods in addition to direct instruction. And at the high school, inter-curricular activities between science and other disciplines have been a focus of our teachers. The STEM Academy is a, is an important and growing aspect as well of our science education. Through this program, we are introducing more students to careers in science and technology. Any questions on science? Okay. And this is the, the narrative explaining WIDA, which I won't touch on too much. This explains how WIDA works, how the, how these charts operate, how the, the English proficiency test results are presented. What I did want to talk about was that the ELL population was the most affected by interrupted learning. Across all tested grades and every subject, the subgroup performed the lowest of all. It's a sad fact that our L population was disproportionately affected with issues ranging from adequate access to technology. Despite the fact that we had a one-to-one Chromebook program, a lot of these kids don't have internet access at home. It's like a, it's like giving, it's like giving a Ferrari to a, to a person with no arms and legs. It's very sad. A lot of kids. Is it above 50? I would say, I mean, we can't necessarily confirm or deny that they do, but we have to take their word for it if they don't have Wi-Fi at home. So this has caused a very large gap to build, and regression with ELL students was immense. So if you look at the discrepancies between the, the last few years, you'll notice that the, the numbers in levels one and three have actually increased. However, they, the results are a little bit skewed because the population numbers for ELLs are low per grade level. So the banded results show a larger downturn than if we just did it by grade level, because then the results wouldn't be reported. That's why we banned them. So that skews it a little bit. Also, we are not allowed to account former Ls in our numbers, and kids that exit the program are a success. We have a lot of kids that have been former Ls that are gifted and talented, that are, that are, that get perfect scores in the NJSLA, but we can't count those towards our L population. In addition to that, it's, they, they're expected to take the examination in the first year in math and science. So despite the fact that these kids have very low language ability, they're still required to take the math and science assessment. They're excused from ELA, but they're not excused. So if you see the charts, you'll notice that in ELA, they are not there, but in math and science are. So there's also been a large influx of students over the last two years at the lowest and highest levels in high school at K through one. So the program does work well, as indicated by past successes, but much like everywhere else, the coming back from the pandemic area regression is going to be a long road ahead for me. That is all I have. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I'd like to make some comments.
Sure.
Online. I mean, being an educator myself, I really want to congratulate the students and the staff, because I feel like the last time we saw this presentation a couple of years ago, I was a couple of years ago, I was less than optimistic with the test scores and so forth. And seeing that even though there was a pandemic between the last time they gave all these tests and now, how much the students have excelled and exceeded the state averages. I mean, that really is due to the hard work of the students and the staff. And when we're up here on the board and we are approving agenda items, they just seem like isolated agenda items. Like when we're approving tutoring for the morning, after-school programs, Conquer Math, seeing people going out, we're approving all of them in isolation on different agendas. But I have to commend you on this presentation because the presentation did a phenomenal job in taking all of the things that we see in isolation and putting it together as a strategy. But what I really, I have to congratulate Mr. Roman Gino because he came to us last year and he asked us to take a leap of faith and do a little restructuring with the middle school, making a dedicated middle school, having a middle school principal. And I think that one of the greatest things that he's done, he's done many wonderful things, is to institute a director of curriculum and instruction. Because I've always believed that when you have somebody who pays attention to only this, great things happen. And I think that this is evident that great things are happening. So congratulations, and very optimistic, and I'm proud of everyone.
I don't know if any of our principals or Mrs. Calabrese, anybody wants to comment. I know administratively, we talked a lot about this. Mr. Albin, great job in putting everything together, so. This will be posted to our website probably tomorrow or Friday. So if you want to look at some of the scores specifically for your school or for your child's school, you'll have the opportunity to do that. Before I move on to the next part of the program, any questions from the public about any items? No? Yes?
Nicholas Sorcella, Department of Student Council. I'm here with my, here with the supervisor, the president, and the secretary of student council.
Your name?
Nicholas Sorcella. And we just wanted to thank you, but it has passed that we're able to go out for student lunch because we worked very hard towards that. And we brought all 25 kids. Because actually, it's a funny story because yesterday I was talking to Mr. Calabrese, the New Jersey representative. He told me that every 25 kids to meet today, that he would come by, but unfortunately, he would come today. But I tried, I made it work. And obviously, you made the announcement that we were going out for student lunch. And we saw me and the student body wanted to thank you for passing that.
I'm glad you did come to the meeting, and I like to see students participate in things that directly affect them. So feel free to come to any of our meetings. I know your first line would be to go to Mr. Pinto or your vice principals. And if they can't answer your questions, you can come to us. I know at the end of last year, we had a meeting, actually at the beginning of this year, about, you know, the cafeteria and maybe better food choices and things like this. So I really think it's important for students to have a voice in their education. Doesn't mean you're always going to get what you want, but to have a voice at least lets us know what's important to you. And then we, as the Board of Education, the superintendent, we have to do what we think is best. So just to take a step back, Mr. Pinto is going to explain to you the guidelines of the program. It may not be everything that you want initially, but it's a start. I think the last time students in Cliffside Park were allowed to go out for lunch, maybe 1975. So it's a start. And I hope that everybody takes the program seriously and abides by the guidelines so that people that follow you will benefit from it and maybe someday will be able to expand the program. Okay, so thank you.
I just have one thing, just stand up. Next time, bring 50, and I'll have those people here. Every time you come, you got to double the number. Fair or not?
Oh, yeah. We had a party going on, so.
We could have had the party here. Could have started the party here, then left.
I mean, when I was the president, I was actually going around asking people crazy to come. And they were, they were actually willing to leave the party and go to the university, and that's so. Again, thank you so much for everything.
If I could put my two cents in, you are the leaders. As Mr. Roman Gino said, this hasn't been done since the 70s. So, you know, implementing this for the first time, there are some guidelines that Mr. Pinto will absolutely explain to you. But you are representing our community, and we have put our faith in you. And actually, all the students that come after you have put their faith in you. So, you know, let's do a wonderful job with it and make us want to expand the program.
Thank you so much.
I want to mention a sentence, Nicholas in particular. As far as Clinton's concerned, I apologize if you guys have certainly agreed before it, but I want you to know, behind the scenes, he has actually put some pressure to try and get this done today. So he is absolutely fighting for this.
Can you take it for us, please?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so I just want to move on to the next part of our program, which is, stop smiling, Jackie. Which is a presentation I'd like to make on behalf of the Board of Education. And I did notice that Everston School Four was named the Blue Ribbon School. Mrs. Russus has been wearing blue everything. And when she calls me, she used to say, hi, Mike, how you doing? This is Jackie. And now she says, Mike, this is the principal of the Blue Ribbon School. She's never going to let us forget it, and she shouldn't. So I just want to say that, if I can get this open. I just want to just go back a little bit. I think maybe Mrs. Russus called me in June. Am I right?
Oh, wait, sorry, January.
Okay, January. And just said that she was notified by the federal government that the Blue Ribbon School Commission, that they identified School Four as a possible school, that they would like to apply for this great recognition. And she asked me, what do I think? And I said, great, go for it. And I know she worked very hard with her staff to put really a very comprehensive application together, which included data about School Four, test scores, demographic makeup, information about staff, students, a number of things. And, you know, of all the schools in New Jersey, only nine schools this school year were picked as Blue Ribbon Schools.
How many did they?
297.
297 schools. So it really is a great honor. And when I talk about it, when I first mentioned it to the Board of Education, I said, you know, it's a great honor for the district, because it is, a great honor for School Four. But I know Mrs. Russus would be the first to say that she couldn't have done it without the entire staff. And what I mean by that is teachers, supervisors, custodians, secretaries, I don't know who else I left out, but everybody that's in the school really is the school community and makes a school what it is. Gives the school the character that it is. And you notice that if you go around the different schools, different schools have different characters, which is made up by the staff and the principals. So everybody really should take a bow for this, all of the School Four. And the board just wants to simply present you a plaque that says, "The Cliffside Park Board of Education congratulates Principal Russus and the entire School Four staff and faculty on being recognized as a 2022 Blue Ribbon School." So it's a great honor. Just one last thing is, I think November 2nd, 3rd, Mrs. Russus will be going to Washington. I didn't want to go with her, but she picked two other people to go with today. I'm not offended. But, you know, all kidding aside, Jackie will be down there with Mrs. Calabrese, Mrs. Scioscia, is that right?
Yes.
And they'll be presenting, they'll be representing Cliffside Park, and they will be presented with a plaque and recognition for all your great accomplishments. Again, we have a cake and coffee and tea. So just spent some time talking tonight, and again, congratulations.
I'd like to just take one minute to thank all of you, Mr. Roman Gino, for your support, and the Board of Education, my mentors, Donna, Dana, throughout the years since I'm a teacher at School Five, my administrative colleagues for their support, phone calls, for the many phone calls, most of all, the faculty and staff at School Four. You believed in me, we were a team, and I appreciate that so much. And my family, for your support, I'm sorry. I really appreciate you. I couldn't have done it without all of you, so thank you. Sorry.
So again, thank you, everyone, for coming to our meeting tonight. Mr. Alphano, motion to close.
Can I make one comment?
Sure, sure.
I'm sorry, I have to put my two cents in only because I might be the only one up here who's the mother of a School Four graduate. And I have to say, as a recent mother of, as a recent mother of a School Four graduate, I loved that school from the moment I set my foot into the door. And I have to thank Mrs. Fontana, who's in the audience, because she got me through kindergarten. I was a hard person against your kindergarten, but she got me through. And I have to say, from the reading program to the math program, to every loving, caring person in the school, whether we were doing, making gingerbread houses in kindergarten or painting the hallways when they were in sixth grade, it was just such a wonderful, loving, nurturing place to be. And I've said this many times about the teaching staff